Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this order. We'll move on to item three. Councilmember City Attorney Manuel Lee. Discussion for possible action. Approval of abatement action to remove a junk and abandoned vehicles. Leaks and debris on private property located at 201 Ogden Avenue, Ely, Nevada. APN 001-025-06. And we have Mr. Peeler with us here.
Right. My name is Jeff Peeler. I'm representing the property question. And we are working on it right now. Cleaning it up. You don't believe me? This one of my trucks. It's full of junk in the back. Parking lot there. So we're, I've got two people working on it permanently that I've hired right from here in Ely. And the only thing that's holding up the vehicles is basically Tom Bass got all the titles. And we're waiting for him to come through with them. And I've sent you a letter with that regard. He's trying, he's cooperating with us. But the DMV can be a pretty hard bunch of people to deal with, with getting rid of old vehicles. So.
So is the timeline of thirty days reasonable?
Well, we're trying to get it done as soon as possible. I'm on his case all the time to try to get those vehicles out of there. Plus, we're going to remove two of them this week. But two, that trailer and a Kia. You know, it's our next door neighbors. It's actually his, but he got sick and we put it there just to protect it from the vandals, which we seem to have an abundance of here.
So, Mr. Peeler, is there a time that you would like to propose to the council to have this finished?
Well, we should have the weeds removed in thirty days. You know, I've given these people plenty of work to do, believe me. And we're making trips to the dump every day. That can be affirmed. And we're just doing it as fast as we can. Trying to also get some production out of our plant, you know, so we can pay for all this.
So is the motion that we need to give Mr. Peeler thirty days from now to complete this cleanup on his property?
If that's what the council would like to go with?
Yeah, that's why.
Okay.
I mean, we're doing it as fast as we can. There's a lot of large rabbit rush on there and stuff like that that's kind of gotten away from us. And.
I'm sure the council and city do appreciate your attention.
Well, the last few years, I've had some medical problems. I haven't been able to go out there and attend to some of this stuff. And it's gotten away from me. And people have taken advantage of our good nature and put vehicles on our property. But it was gone. So, you know.
I would make that motion for additional thirty days for Mr. Peeler and his group to get that.
We have a motion from councilman Peeler? Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Second from councilman Carson. Any further discussion?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you. We are giving it the old college try, so.
Sure. Thank you again, Mr. Peeler.
All right.
We'll move on to city business in the interest of addressing a few time schedules. We're going to start with item two. Councilman Carson, White Pine County Sheriff's Bureau of Crime, discussion for possible action. Approval of resolution 2021 dash three to ratify the approval of the Ely Renaissance Society mural selection committee for placement of a new mural on 648 Altman Street.
Well, thanks for having me. I made public comment after the two meetings ago. Can I give the board a heads up about this one? Thanks for putting this on the agenda. We've been working with the Renaissance Society of multiple artists. I'm talking, when I say we, I'm speaking of the White Pine Main Street Committee. And so they received thirty thousand dollars that was earmarked towards monuments and murals from the State Main Street Association. And so the three murals that we're going over tonight are what? The Renaissance Village or Society and Main Street and everybody kind of came up with. So the first one is at 648 Altman. That location is adjacent to Economy Drug. In the parking lot right now, there's a Fuller O'Brien paint sign that's on it. The paint's chipping off, things like that. At that location, we were working with Reno mural artist Eric Burke. He's done work all over the world. But he's a Nevada artist. And so he's working with the Shoshone Tribe to do a mural that represents the powwow. Specifically, not so much Native American culture in general, but the powwow, the colors, the textures, the faces, the military service, all of that. So I don't have a mock-up for any of these because it is still work in progress.
And that being said, I think I'll go ahead and open items three. Councilman Carson, White Pine County Sheriff's Bureau of Crime, discussion for possible action. Approval of resolution 2021 dash four to ratify the approval of the Ely Renaissance Society mural selection committee for placement of a new mural on 1676 Altman Street. And then also item four. Councilman Carson, White Pine County Sheriff's Bureau of Crime, discussion for possible action. Approval of resolution 2021 dash five to ratify the approval of the Ely Renaissance Society mural selection committee for placement of a new mural on 2517 Altman Street.
Actually, there's an adjustment to that. It's not 2517, it's 1325.
Thirteen twenty-five?
Thirteen twenty-five, yeah. So the other address was one that we were looking at, but that one was not one that we wanted. So, okay, so cool. So the one next to Economy Drug and the beauty shop, that's going to be a powwow one celebrated. Our powwow event, the one on 1676 Altman is Desert Rose Ceramics and Crafts. Speaking with them, they're very supportive and wanted to have something that honored veterans and military service. And so when we started talking about the different options that we had, the 1919 Military Convoy, transcontinental military convoy that was led by Lieutenant Colonel Dwight D. Eisenhower at the time, across the Lincoln Highway, came up as kind of what everyone perked everybody's ears. And there's a great photo of the children of Ely in 1919 sitting on with a tank right on 11th Avenue, now Nevada Northern Railway, in front of the buildings right there. So that was kind of the inspiration of this. And then we started looking at other photos from the convoy. And so there's three huge panels on the west facing side of that building. One of them is going to be, is going to have a large picture of 1919 Eisenhower. It is Colonel uniform, kind of leading this caravan with cars behind it. The middle one is going to be of the tank with the children sitting on it. That's the one I like the most because it's actually Ely children that are sitting on the tank. Somebody's grandfather is in that picture. Lots of people's grandfathers are in that picture. And then the panels to the far left is going to be more based around the soldiers of the time. So it's going to take on kind of like a scrapbook collage kind of style. But it'll be kind of honoring, you know, the Lincoln Highway coming through as well as this being the first transcontinental trip, as well as military convoy after World War One was done by Dwight Eisenhower. So that's the second one. The third one on 1325 Altman, that's right there, the curve going into what I call midtown Ely. But it's Dr. Artlson's building. It's a cement cube that has recently been repaired and whitewashed. And so it's kind of just sitting there in a very visible area. And Dr. Artlson wanted to recreate a scene that, you know, only few see, and particularly if you're a hunter, and that's being up above 10,000 feet at sunrise. And the animals that are out, the color of the sky, the aspen trees. And so that mural is going to wrap around the front and the side of the building. That one is being done, that one is being done by J.D. Vinsec, who is a Las Vegas mural artist. She's the one that did the four new murals that we did last summer that had the 3D kind of interactive, the training, the horses, Great Basin, and the cave fair. So she's going to be doing the success sunrise, is what we're calling it, that one. And then the military convoy is going to be done by David Azuna, who is also a Las Vegas mural artist. He's the one that's been hired to do the touch-ups that we've been doing over the past couple of years. And so he's been really wanting to do an original mural. And so this is his chance. He jumped at that one to do that. So those are the three locations, the three topics. The Renaissance Society is happy with the selections and the locations, and so are the property owners. So if you have any questions or concerns, we can address them now.
Okay. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion on approval of these three items. That's two, three, and four. I have motion from councilman Alworth. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from councilman Beecher. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items are per.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then we will skip them to item seven. Right, discussion for, councilman Alworth, discussion for possible action. Review of the possible changes to broadband art draft conceptual designs provided by Civil Science Infrastructure Union Services Board as Snipelmo Round-Rain-Teen grant application.
I'm referring to this, but it's down there.
Perfect. So first off, we appreciate being here, Mayor and council. And a little introduction to myself. My name's Cody Howick. This isn't the first time I've been in city council meeting. I was out here about ten years ago. Worked on a lot of the park projects out here with you guys in the county. So I also have Alex Stewart with me. He's kind of my right-hand man and design lead on all of my projects. So kind of give you where we're at in this process. We've presented some alternatives. We met with the council and Mike over there and just kind of got some feedback. And that's really what we're looking for today, to kind of produce a final rendering for you during your next city council meeting. So we did give you, if you're looking at some of the stuff, we gave you an existing site conditions map. So you can kind of see what's going on out there. And then we gave you three concepts. Concept one, most of it had to deal with the field layout, if you look at it, and how we had to orient things. Concept two has the field oriented how it is existing. I'll be honest, that didn't really fit very well with what we're trying to do out there. So meeting with Jim, we felt like we liked concept one and three the most. And then there were things on three we liked more than on one. So we liked the idea of getting rid of bleachers and terracing, that slope. We also liked the expanded parking near the city office to help with parking at the city office and events. What else are we talking about there? So really, concept three was the one we kind of focused on and maybe some tweaks to. We looked at maybe separating that large restroom and shade pavilion and having that separate instead of together. And then instead of doing just restroom, making that a little bit bigger and having a maintenance area. You can see the difference, the main difference between one and three is where the splash pad is located. On three, it's more towards Mill Street. And on concept one, it's up towards the existing playground area.
I think three looks good. I've got to say, I was on those bleachers. I don't know, I'm going to keep those bleachers out. But I was on those last night in there and looking at them. So, but one thing that I have been very recently approached about by some community members, family members of the broadband specifically, was that they were wanting a sign. Do we have plans for a sign? Like a sign that says broadband park or?
Well, I suppose that's a detail.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
I mean, I agree. I think concept three looks pretty great. And I like the walking path that got added. I know that was a big thing for a lot of our community members. And I really like the maintenance equipment area. I think we've been needing one of those and we definitely will in the future. And I like the additional parking. I think you guys put that in really great. It's really seamless and we're doing extra parking down there.
The basketball court's been.
Oh, yeah, that's one thing we talked about. Maybe instead of just tying ourselves down to a basketball court, because we know the Snipelmo process. Once you say you're going to do something, you got to do it.
Sure.
Maybe thinking about maybe doing a multi-sport court, kind of leaves the options open.
Court area.
Yeah.
Sport ball court.
So if you wanted to do something different than basketball, there's that option.
Sure.
So that's something we might change. And then maybe put the pavilion over in that area instead of on the restroom.
Yeah, put a restroom over there on Clark Street. Because the big one over there on Mill. And we decided with group, Bernie and I and Jennifer and Mike, we talked about putting a lot of that stuff over on Mill Street. There's a lot more traffic, probably hopefully less chance of any vandalism with traffic going by, security lights and so forth on that right there. We talked about, even though it's not allowed there, electrical outfits for outlets for food trucks, air freshener pavilion, electrical connections like this.
That's a good idea.
And then the terracing, the pictures behind all this, the terracing we chose was a small terracing number two, example two. Mike agreed that would be easier on maintenance. And the small splash pad, we talked about not putting rocks in around it. Try to avoid kids jumping off rocks around their head. And the shade concession restroom building, again, these are just ideas, these pictures busted. You go up on the top right-hand corner. It's a multi-purpose type building, concession restrooms, and Mike made the shot of getting in there.
Yep.
And shaded areas, you know, we had two of them. It's a small shade area and a larger one for bigger areas. Then it shows you on the walkway, the horseshoe pinnets. But one thing, you know, the big thing that we talked about was the grass field is going to be there. We'll put in some different scraper system. When we moved the backstop to softball pitching, baseball for practice that the kids use, back in that direction toward the armory or toward Mill Street, avoid busted windows, foul balls and so forth.
And I like that it keeps it open, you know, for a lot of the other things they use it for, like the car shows and stuff like that as well.
And new overhead lights also. You want to tell them about the style of lights over there?
Yeah, typically, we like to recommend, they're called Musco lights. Lincoln County has them on pretty much every park down there. But you can turn them on and off with your phone. So it'd be great for Mike if someone's coming to use the facility. And they have a 20-year warranty on bulbs and everything. So they'll come out, change bulbs, and really maintenance free.
These LEDs now? Is that what they do?
They're a little pricey, but 20 years down the road, it's a little worth it.
Yeah. I mean, I'd recommend concept three. I don't give a vote here, but.
That's great.
Okay.
So do we need a motion?
Is there anything else kind of you think we're missing or we kind of need to address? So just to kind of reiterate, Jim and the council, we do have another restroom building up on Clark Street that we want to put in next to the existing playground. That would be a very small one, two-stall, very simple. Just felt like that was needed up in that area, especially with the red playground and if that amphitheater area gets a lot of people.
Right.
They're not going to walk, won't walk.
Yeah, because one thing to point out, a good point of that, the theater, you know, in the corner up there looks almost small. You can look at the pictures. And for a small venue, you know, a little one-man band thing or whatever. But if we get a larger event going, you can move it down to the field more. And we still got the terrace-type scene.
Yeah, I think that's.
So kind of go from here. We'll get these ideas, put it in one final plan. It'll be nice, final rendering, colored picture that we'll have for your next city council meeting. I won't be able to be here, but we'll have that with a cost estimate. About how much that's going to cost? And then we'll go present it at county commission July 12th. Right?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, yeah. Okay.
So I would move to approve with the moving forward of concept three, with the change of the basketball court to a general sports court. And we even should have a sign that said that.
We have a long, we're thinking about removing the bleachers.
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We have a motion. Go ahead, a second.
I'll second that motion.
Second from councilman Alworth. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Okay. And if I would, I could give you a quick update on Jack Taylor while I'm here.
Sure.
We are in the process of design. We just finished the environmental process. That's why we're out here. And we're hoping to get through that and bid it come November or December for spring construction. So, that's why we're at a moment of crisis. Okay, thank you.
Good. With that, we'll move back to item one. Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action. Get to write for approval of letters to Senator Rosen. Senator Cortez made a vote to support the secure funding for the added partner transportation Ely Main Street project, lower east Ely Water Mainz project, and essential Ely sewer system upgrade. As the first mentioned, the community did vote in for the upgrade.
I'll make a motion to approve the, let's approve those.
Motion to approve, councilman Alworth. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second from councilman Beecher. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this order. We move on to item five. Councilman Carson, discussion for possible action. Direction of the city human resource director to establish a committee to update employee demonstrations.
I just put this on here because it's going to take a couple of months, I think, to really do it right and just restart and come up with a good program. I'll move to approve and heavily influence Mr. Alworth to sit on that floor.
I feel pressured, but I'll second the motion.
We are with you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this order. We move on to item six. Councilman Spear, councilman Alworth, discussion only. Update on quarter group requirements on behalf of the city of Ely.
Well, I'm going to do, I'm going to put our extinguished guest, General Bureau Chair, for the quarter group. So I'd refer to him and he's, I'll tell you right quickly, we're all in the hands of the Senate. They're going to, welcome to our fine city, General.
Mayor, council, good to see you all. Had a great motorcycle ride up from Las Vegas this morning. Anyway, so quick update from us. As you know, all of your applications for earmarks have been submitted to the two Senate offices. We made that. And I again want to commend councilman Alworth and BJ. I mean, a lot of hard work. It's not like the good old days when I worked for Senator Eaton when we were doing earmarks or you just put stuff in the hills and moved on. Now you have to have all kinds of documentation and support. And I think that's clearly a way that they're trying to be more transparent in Washington, DC right now. And quite frankly, they've covered themselves to make sure that they've, you know, checked all the boxes before they get the problem of maybe being labeled as the bridge to nowhere. But anyway, we have all your stuff submitted. My assistant is in the process of setting up the meeting for us to go with both senators and for you, Mayor, and everybody to talk to them and explain and answer any questions on that. The hot development that happened today, that I should say maybe another window of opportunity for us, is that the infrastructure bill that's been talked about for probably a decade, maybe longer. But today, bipartisan group of senators had come to a conclusion on a one point, I think it's 1.3 trillion dollar infrastructure package. Let me bring that up because that's somewhere else that we'll start looking for resources to help you out. As Jennifer knows, I've been working on trying to get you guys connected better with the state. There's, they're going to get a big influx of cash. And I know that obviously here, sewer water and broadband are the high topics. And they are specifically mentioned in that legislation. So I think that's something we need to, you know, work on together and see what we can get out of the state for resources for that. So that's pretty much it. I mean, I think we're on a good track. I guess I would say, you know, we were very disappointed that we didn't get anything in the House from Congressman Horford. Turned up the screws on him to be more supportive of your Snipelmo request. And so they sent a letter to the Secretary of Interior. And I've asked Congressman Horford if he has an opportunity, if he happens to be chatting with the secretary about something, to mention your project specifically and try and give that extra boost to get through the process. And then we should probably talk more about this property and see if we can be helpful on round nineteen. Let's see what we can do there. And as you know, one of the senators also submitted a letter in support of round eighteen forty-two. So anyway, some progress, slow, but we're getting there. We're getting the wheels moving. It's always difficult to start, but once we get things moving, I think, you know, hopefully we'll be able to finally produce some good resources for you guys and help the city out. Any questions?
We certainly appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to meet you all face to face instead of Zoom. And that's why I wanted to come up here and see you all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow morning.
Yep.
Anything else there?
No, nothing.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to item eight. Councilmembers, city attorney tracks, discussion for possible action. Approval of collective bargaining agreement between city of Ely Fire Department and operating engineers local three, July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Did anybody have any questions with the changes?
They did want to go for the multi-year.
No. We have some in discussions that they have wanted that we didn't agree with, but we said we'd go a year and review it next year if it really was applicable to do so. With them, it was, sorry, with them, it was.
So they got the five percent raise for also?
Correct.
Any questions? Any motion?
Move to approve?
Motion to approve, councilman Beecher. Do I have a second? Second from councilman Flank. Any further discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this order. Thank you. We move on to item nine. Councilmembers, city attorney Manuel Lee, discussion for possible action. Approval of abatement action to include removal of fell trees on private property located at 2101 South Street, Ely, Nevada, APN 001-411-01. I assume you have the property owner?
Seriously.
Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Teresa Sisley.
Welcome.
The Anton Silver person, I think that's that's it. Hi, guys. I brought for you guys some maps. I think what you guys are talking about is in front of our house with the mailboxes, there's some fell trees.
They're on Arden?
Yeah. That's not our property.
Do we know where those trees got there?
Hmm?
Do we know where those trees came from?
They were piled. I don't know.
They've just got a concrete, you know, started from the building.
Do we know how they got cut down, I guess?
They've took over.
They got took over in a store or something? Do we know? They got took over at some point?
But they're not ours. I'm sorry. So can you guys correct the address? And we did try to reach out to the city attorney on May 19th, May 18th, May 13th. We left messages, but nobody got back with us.
Do we, to the telephone, you tried to reach to?
I got, I got through to the city and they sent me to voicemail to them. And I asked for a meeting with the city attorney so we could get straight down. And I haven't gotten any response from them. And I don't do those meetings anymore now that it comes straight to the council. There's no longer the entering meeting like the city attorney.
The council is who you address those issues with, not the attorney. It's the issue there, so.
I think, you know, I have to take it back now that you mentioned that that's not your property. It's a little sliver of land there belongs to a gentleman from McGill.
Is that this number one on two here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't know.
Which, which were, were we talking about?
We're talking about.
I don't know if I am there, but I didn't want to like put them in there, so.
That little, just right off the road there, right?
Here?
You see this orchard right there?
Our land, it's pretty much in the middle of the ditch.
That's right there. You're right.
Okay. So then.
What are the options there to deal with this? Are the options of the council, yes, the.
So the options is to order abatement or give more time for it to be done or die for lack of motion.
But the, the APN number that's on there is not the APN where the trees are sitting.
So we would need to notice the proper.
So this abatement issue would die for lack of motion when the property owner would notice.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Look, you know, a little point out, on this property right there, where we're talking about these trees are at, I know there were never no trees growing there. They were dumped there.
So it's like in this picture that those are, they're standing there.
Yeah, they're, they're big trees because we had an issue with the property owner that the lady was talking about in the past.
Sure.
And there were no trees there. He actually went in there and puts some, filled dirt in, trying to level the property out and hope it was settled. Those, I have no idea how the trees got there, but they weren't there while I pretty much built this in the city.
They grew there.
Okay. So anybody like to make a motion?
Well, I think you need to get over the right property owner. And it's easy for this property owner, if he wants to do it, to pick up a piece of equipment and a dump truck and haul it off.
So this, as I just said from the attorney, this item needs to die for lack of motion.
Yes.
And then we'll notice the property owner at one or two, and then we'll go with this. Yeah. So item dies for lack of motion. And we move on to item 10.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, though.
Thank you.
Item 10, councilmember city attorney Manuel Lee, discussion for possible action. Approval of abatement action to include removal of fell trees, abandoned vehicles, leaks and debris on private property located at 1700 Campton Street, Ely, Nevada, APN 001-401-03. And we provided a map here.